Good evening. I would like to call the meeting of February 17th of the West Sacramento Planning Commission to order. We start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance and I'd like to ask our senior most serving member of the commission, Mr. Charlie Moore, to lead us in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I meant seniors, the most longstanding, not the senior member. Okay, thank you. We'll move to item number A, which is presentations by the public on matters not on the agenda, but within the jurisdiction of the commission. I do not have any requests to speak, but if you would like to speak during our public hearing later, there are forms that are near the entrance door and if you could fill that out and leave those with our clerk, that would help us as we progress through the agenda. And is this for, excuse me Cindy, is this for this item now or for item four?
What's that for? Item four?
Okay, we'll hold that for item four, thank you. All right, at this time we'll swear in, we're welcoming two new commissioners and we'll swear in those commissioners as well as, I believe, a swearing in of all of the commission this evening. And our clerk will lead us through that process, so.
Madam Chairperson and commissioners, if you'll please stand, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I.
I, Charles Moore.
Hi, Cindy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I will take this obligation freely.
That I will take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you very much for leading us through that swearing in and I'd like to take a moment to welcome our newest commissioners, welcome aboard. And that leads us to item C, which is correspondence and staff communication from the Planning Commission Secretary. Hi, Ms. Hamilton.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the commission. The council met this week for their council strategic planning session. That concluded yesterday. I was a part of that as one of the executive team members and it seemed very productive. They did put the general plan update on the policy agenda for the next year as a top priority, so that will be continuing to move forward. With regard to items that are on the agenda this evening, you do have a communication that was mailed into us this week from Elliot Holmes regarding item number four. And that is all of staff's communications this evening.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hamilton. That moves us to item D, which is disclosure of ex parte communications. This is the time which commissioners, if they've had discussions about the topics on our agenda outside of this public forum, that that's shared for the purpose of all the residents, so that folks are aware of our discussions outside that. Are there folks who would like to share? Okay, Mr. Lebig.
Madam Chair, thank you. I need to disclose that I have met with representatives of the applicant for agenda item number four.
Madam Chairman, I also met with the applicant on item number four.
All right, Mr. Moore and Mr. Galvane.
Madam Chair, I also met with a representative of the applicant.
Madam Chair, I also met with them.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair, I also met with the applicant on item number four.
I played phone tag with one of the representatives. I didn't actually meet with them.
And I actually spoke with two folks advocating on item number four about the project and their desire to share with me all of the benefits of the project. So that is all the disclosure we have this evening. That moves us to our consent agenda, which is our two items, the consideration approval of the minutes from the December 16th Planning Commission meeting from last year, as well as a zoning administrator interpretation, which is timing of improvements.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Lebig?
If we move the recommended action or move the consent agenda, are we actually moving for option A, the staff recommendation? There are three options.
Yes, you would be moving the recommended option A.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that interpretation, was that something that we discussed in the past? Is that dealing with parking of vehicles at homes or is it just a general?
It's just a general. What we're seeing in this economy is that we may have conditions on projects that go back a year or more and that they're just now moving forward to develop. And they had a condition that said they had to either have a parking lot paved prior to occupancy or some other site improvement done by a certain point in time, most likely occupancy. And that's on the zoning side of things, but then in the city standards and the municipal code, it allows for the city engineer to have some discretion in timing and phasing of some of the site improvements. And so we are seeing some requests on projects where there needs to be a little bit of phasing in order to accommodate the feasibility of the project. And so we're looking to the commission to give the city engineer a little bit of flexibility as opposed to the, maybe the hard, fast interpretation that might come out of some of the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. We have two consent agendas, agenda items ahead of us. If there are no more questions, I actually would like to, because we have two new commissioners and I would typically recommend that folks who are in the meeting not actually approve minutes. So I think actually probably we should take those two items separately. So I'm looking for a motion for the consideration approval of the minutes from December 16th.
Madam Chair, I move, we, I move the approval of the minutes for the December 16th, 2010 Planning Commission.
Thank you, moved by Mr. Lebig. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moore. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstentions?
Abstention.
Abstention, two abstentions, all right. And then we'll move to the zoning administrator interpretation, timing of improvements. Entertain a motion for that item?
Madam Chairman, I'd make a motion that we affirm the zoning administrator action.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Moved by Mr. Moore, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Galvane. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. We'll now move on to my favorite item of the evening, which is the selection of chairperson and vice chairperson. It's been a real honor to serve as chair this past year, but at this time I'd like to open up nominations for, we'll take these separately, these items separately, for chair of the commission. If there are any nominations?
If there aren't, then you'd stay. I'll make a motion that we nominate Russ Lebig as our new chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Wow, seconded by Ms. Blackburn? Are there any other nominations from the floor? Otherwise, we'll take up that motion? All right. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, loudly, aye?
Aye.
All right. And now we'll take up, I'll turn over the gavel momentarily, we'll take up the, congratulations.
Thank you.
The nomination for vice chair. Is there a nomination for vice chair of the commission?
Madam Chairman, I'd be honored to nominate Joe Galvane for the position of vice chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Blackburn. All right. All those in favor, any other nominations from the floor? All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Passes unanimously. Congratulations, gentlemen. I think we'll take one moment to do a little.
Can I ask one question before you leave?
Yes, yes, of course, of course.
Do we not have to nominate the secretary at the same time? We normally nominate all three.
I believe you nominated or reappointed the secretary in January.
January?
December.
December, yeah.
With the retirement of Steve Recala.
Right, but I mean, do we need to do it again, just for general purposes?
You can, if you'd like to. The city attorney is indicating to me that it's not a requirement.
Okay, I don't care. It's just, that's what we normally do.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moore, for asking the question. And I think we'll, how about Joe, I'll move where you're sitting and then you'll move over.
Musical chair.
Again, it's been an honor to serve and I look forward to handing the gavel.
And that's for item number four?
Yeah, item number four.
Thank you.
Yeah, you got a lot of work tonight, Russ.
And the name tags will also need to be shifted.
Thank you for catching that. And thank you again, Madam Chair, you set a high bar. Okay, moving down the agenda, the next item is the public hearing regarding the Westbridge Plaza Phase Two conditional use permit. Ms. Allen.
Good evening, Chairman Lebig and members of the commission. This item is a conditional use permit for two restaurant drive-through lanes in Phase Two of Westbridge Plaza. The restaurants would be located north of Westbridge Plaza Phase One and west of the Arlington Oaks neighborhood. In 1992, the city council approved a general plan amendment and rezoned for the Seaway International Trade Center. In 1995, a vesting tentative map to subdivide the property into parcels for industrial, commercial, business park and park uses was approved by the Planning Commission. In May 2005, the Port District entered into an agreement with the property owner to purchase 30 acres on the east side of Lake Washington Boulevard and the purchase was completed in February 2006. In November 2006, the Planning Commission approved a major modification to PD 37 to accommodate the relocation of a 3.8 acre park site to the area north of the Arlington Oaks neighborhood. Also, in November 2006, the Planning Commission approved an amendment to the Southport Design Guidelines allowing truck docks and storage areas on the east side of Lake Washington Boulevard in the BP zone within 350 feet of residential areas subject to implementation of mitigation measures. The current project applicant submitted the project to the city in September 2010. The applicant subsequently submitted a design review application for the McDonald's restaurant. A notice of incomplete application was sent to the applicant on October 19th. The applicant resubmitted both the design review package and the use permit package on December 21st and the package was deemed complete January 20th and scheduled for hearing. The comment period for the McDonald's restaurant for the design review actually runs through today. We can now tell you, although it's not listed in your staff report, that the second restaurant is proposed to be a Taco Bell and they submitted their application for their design review on February 14th. Madam Clerk, if you could show them the site. So this is the design for the McDonald's. You're looking at the side that would actually face the parking lot there. And if you could go to the next screen there. This is the side of the facade that would face Lake Washington Boulevard there with the drive-through aisle. If we can move on to Taco Bell. This is the preliminary design for the Taco Bell. As I say, they have just submitted it and are just beginning their design review process. However, since we had it, wanted to at least give you a feel for their initial design. And I think there's one more. And this is also the side of their restaurant that faces the street there. These restaurants that are proposed are proposed to be located in an area which features both local and regionally serving uses. The convenient nature of drive-through is compatible with this type of environment. We suspect that people shopping at the shopping center as well as individuals working in the neighborhood in places like Southport Industrial Park will frequent this as well as residents of Bridgeway Islands, Bridgeway Lakes in their commute time. The Southport Design Guidelines Sections 4.2 and 3 do list restaurants and fast food restaurants as one of the program elements for neighborhood and community commercial centers. The project shouldn't be detrimental to the Arlington Oaks neighborhood. The neighborhood is located approximately 900 feet to the east of the project. All lighting for the project will be required to be shielded to ensure that lighting does not impact the area and the applicant will be required to submit a photometric plan when they submit building permits for the project. The applicant also had a noise study prepared that showed that noise impacts should not be an issue with the project. As mentioned before, both restaurants will be required to comply with design review standards listed in the Southport Framework Plan and they're also required to comply with the Westbridge Plaza Design Guidelines. The restaurants will be done in a Creole theme, which is required for the Northwest Village. Staff has worked very closely with the McDonald's architect. The first design we got was rather plain and not in the Creole theme, however, they listened quite closely to us and came back with a design that was much more in keeping with the Creole theme and very compatible with the buildings that are built in Phase One of the center. And we will be working closely with Taco Bell as well to make sure that their design is equally as compatible. That concludes my presentation. It's respectfully recommended that the Planning Commission conduct the public hearing, adopt the recommendations as listed in the staff report and approve the mitigation monitoring plan. I welcome any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Allen. For the benefit of the commission and the audience, to clear up any confusion resulting in our musical chairs this evening, I just want to run through what the next steps will be. I'll bring this back to the commission for any questions specifically of staff. At that time or following that time, I'll open up the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak should have filled out one of these already, as Mrs. Sandin has already indicated. And following public comments, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for deliberation. So with that, are there any specific questions of staff at this time?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I did have a few questions. I think they're primary clarifications for staff. One, I think on page two of the staff report, it's indicated that BP general plan designation allows financial institutions, and I wasn't sure whether it was clear that that also included drive-throughs for those financial institutions.
It does, and the drive-throughs for a financial institution do not require a use permit.
Okay, thank you. My second of three questions here involves the relation to the noise study that was performed and again, I think it's a clarification, but there was an inconsistency that I'd like to have cleared up. Page three of the staff report analysis, item three indicated 31 decibels for vehicle noise, 36 for speaker noise, for an average of 37 dB. In the environmental checklist under issue 12, at noise, the discussion, it relates to a level of 18 dB at the nearest residence. And then later on in the actual noise study, there's a reference to the 37 dB that is still less insignificant. I just want to clarify, is that 18 dB number incorrect or not?
The 18 dB number derived from noise information that we received from McDonald's. Subsequent to receiving that, after the initial study was published, they chose to have a noise study prepared, which came out with the more conservative numbers which are listed in the staff report. Both sets of numbers are still under the level of significance.
Okay, thank you. And the final question was regarding the circulation. Staff report at the top of page four indicated that, indicates the city development engineering unit further reviewed the project for site-specific circulation, ingress and egress, vehicle stacking and other factors, but there's no follow-up to their review as to whether these did meet their standards.
They were satisfied with all of those issues. The one issue they asked the applicant to change on their initial review was to change the northern exit to the property to a right-in, right-out configuration for safety matters and the applicant has complied with that.
Okay, other than that, then the circulation was acceptable.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you. Are there any other questions at this time? No? Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. Kathy, is the applicant here and would he like to speak?
The applicant is here and that would be Dan Ramos.
Okay.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission, chairperson Lebig. Congratulations on your appointment as chair. And also wanted to welcome our two new members, Bob and Jeremy. Welcome. Anyway, my name's Dan Ramos and actually, why am I here? But I'm standing in for Lux Taylor tonight from Taylor Properties, who is the applicant and the developer for this project. As many of you know, Lux is overseas in Africa assisting his wife, who's on a special assignment for the US government and for the ambassador of Kenya. So he's over there doing some good work, him and his wife. So anyway, Lux asked me if I could step in and help lead the team for this meeting tonight. So that's why I'm here. I'm pretty familiar with the development issues of Southport and been involved with that for many years, so that's why I'm here kind of representing this team. I'd like to, I'm going to have a few brief comments, but I want to introduce you to our team, but I look back and we kind of dominate the room here, so I can say pretty much we have representatives in both McDonald's, their operational side and real estate, also from Taco Bell here, their operational and the architects. We have a sound expert here, civil engineering expert. And also want to, too, I do want to introduce to you too, is John Glickbar, who is actually Taylor Properties partner on this project from Village Properties, and John's right over there. And he's a part of the owner of this project also. And what I really want to introduce is Charles and Betty Speck, who are here to represent the McDonald's operation here and will be involved in this project. So I think we've all seen the familiar faces of Charles and Betty, so we're glad to have them here with us tonight. So now for my brief comments, I'll keep them brief, Charlie, I will. We are in support of staff's recommendations and we urge approval tonight of our project. And we especially want to compliment both Kathy Allen and the great job she did and the interface that went on and Cora Charlene. And I think there's a very, very good staff report, very clear and was very well communicated. We appreciate the process that we went through, so wanted to thank staff and the great job they've done. Kathy stole some of my thunder, I wanted to disclose tonight that we do have a second operator, it is Taco Bell and they are under contract and we're glad to have them here tonight represented. And so, but for my brief comments, I just wanted to make sure, it's important to note that the locally oriented retail and service uses are permitted uses for this property. And tonight we're here for the CUP for the drive-throughs and the components of this project. And to address any of the issues and any impacts and mitigate the drive-through operations for these two units. I also would like to point out that during these difficult economic times, that this project will provide a needed boost for employment in our community, especially our youth employment. Both these units will employ several large numbers of our local youth, which is important, and actually adult employment too, but it's important that we have it. And also wanted to point out, by locating these amenities as restaurants close to the Southport Employment Center, which includes Southport Business Park and the future Business Park of the city or the Port of Sacramento, building right adjacent across to the west of here, you know, overall, there's 10,000 jobs projected to go in this area in Southport, in these two employment centers. So I just, it's important that it will, that we have these kind of services nearby. It also make recruitment and retention of companies that are, that it make it much easier to keep companies here because they'll have these services nearby. I have a letter here from Jackson Properties, the owner of the office building that you see down in their office, Southport Parkway, and I'll pass it out when I'm done with my comments here, but it's particularly important to them that they've had, they've had their rough go of keeping that building leased and one of the major issues there is nearby amenities, i.e. restaurants and whatever like that. So they're very excited about this project being here. And also I've had comments from the summit, the commercial people, very excited about having these services be located nearby, helping the recruitment. And then one other note, I think is important considering this project, is the decrease of traffic trips that right now that are going over the Danilsey-Pomodice Bridge, right up through Harbor Boulevard, past where my office is, up over the interchange up to these two restaurants that are already up in that site. So this will actually kind of, these trips, some of these, most of these trips are already being made and be part of our traffic model. So this is a real way to kind of mitigate some of that traffic that's going to be locally serving there in the Southport area at the retail. It's enough of my rambling because I can stay here and Charlie will boot me out of here anyway. So wanted to be, let you know, our team is here to answer any questions you have, so please have at us and we're delighted to be here tonight and thank you for giving us the consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Ramos. I have one request to speak tonight from David Look. Please just state your name before speaking, thank you.
My name's David Look, resident of Southport for 10 years now and I'm also a parent and many of us moms and dads in the area just want a place to take our children, you know, for a quick snack after a game or any other outings that we do without having to actually leave Southport. Kids love McDonald's and Taco Bell and so having these options available would be a great convenience, so just want to thank you for considering this project. That's all.
Thank you. Since the applicant does have part of their team here, I'm going to ask, does the commission have any questions for the applicant's staff before I close the public hearing?
Actually, I just have one question regarding the noise level and I see where it does fall below the threshold that the city requires, but I'm just curious, from the residents behind the Arlington Oaks area, with the normal level that it's going to be set at, can you actually hear it over there? I mean.
I would like to introduce you to Paul Ballard, who's done the sound studies, the expert at this, and I think he'll be able to shed a lot of light because I think that's probably one of the bigger issues here tonight. So listen up, Paul.
Good evening. For the record, I'm Paul Ballard with Ballard Acoustical. And in answer to your question, the short answer is not likely. There's a fair amount of traffic noise that comes off of the roadways in the immediate project vicinity. There's 800-plus foot separation between the two restaurants and the nearest neighbors. There's an existing berm. And in addition, the fast food drive-through lanes are on the opposite side of the structure, which accounts for some of the difference in noise levels between what we predicted and what McDonald's had. So we never like to say that someone will absolutely not hear something because people's sensitivities vary, but I would say it would be highly unlikely, given the level of ambient noise that's out there, just from background traffic.
Yeah, and I'm just thinking sort of worst-case scenario, let's say 11:30 at night when there's not a lot of traffic. The berm there, where it's located, and the decimal level is still sufficient.
We're predicting levels that are well order of magnitude below the city's noise standards as well as below existing ambient levels that we measured in the area. So even during the late night hours, we wouldn't anticipate any problems.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Ballard.
Thank you very much.
Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring deliberation back to the commission. Are there any comments, questions at this time? Need somebody to start?
You always get one. Go ahead. Actually, I have a couple of questions and my questions, and Paul kind of talked about the sound levels and, you know, I'm concerned about that, but my concern, and I called Kathy and she was going to check it out for us, we have the berm there, but the sound wall still needs to be completed on that project for the rest of. the sound wall still needs to be completed on that project for the rest of that project. And of course, if we had the sound wall completed all the way down, then the residents probably would never hear anything. And I know the sound wall is a requirement of the project to develop, but I'm not sure if it's a requirement of the project to develop because of these two restaurants, or it becomes when we build closer to the residents. And Kathy, could you give me an update on what you were able to find out?
Certainly. The mitigation monitoring plan does address this, you are correct, and what it states is that the wall needs to be built on top of the berm at such time that a noise study, when it is performed, says that the wall is required to provide the proper noise buffering. And in our estimation, these projects would not be required to have the wall built because of the fact that they're well below the noise levels.
Now, no offense to the sound guy, but sometimes, you know, just the way you place a speaker, whatever with the building, the sound does go over there. If we were to get complaints from a resident over there, would that then trigger the necessity to build the sound wall?
Only if it was shown that they were exceeding the thresholds.
You know, and I say this in good faith, but we had a building that I built up in Chico, and we parked a vehicle on the side of the building, and the neighbor started complaining. It was a refrigeration unit, and it would run at night, and they said, "It is so loud, we can't hardly sleep." And it turned out when we went up there that because of where we parked it in the building, it actually amplified the sound. And I don't know how it did that, but it did. So we had to move it, and that's why I was saying, sometimes you don't know for sure, but we would check it out, and that would trigger it if it does, if the sound levels go up.
Yes. Yeah, if the sound levels go up, and if we did get complaints, we do have noise measuring equipment through our quote enforcement division, so we can verify it.
The second of my three questions, it must be a commission thing, we have three questions, but the second one is, also when development starts in this project, that was a trigger also from the old project, once this development started on this project, that we would then build the road that would connect to the park area down by the deep water channel?
You were correct, that is how the project was conditioned. However, the project, when it was conditioned as such, was envisioned that it would build out all in one phase, like Phase One did. In speaking with Mark Coller, you're in the development engineering section, he actually would prefer that the section of the road that is in front of the restaurants be the only section that is built at this time due to the fact that he doesn't want a long cul-de-sac to nowhere.
Well, it's not actually going to nowhere, it's going to the park area. I mean, I, I mean, I just assumed that that would be an absolute mandate. I mean, everybody's been waiting for a way to get in there for a long time.
We do not have plans at this point to open up that section of the park for, with parking. The issue would be, it would be a dead end longer than 600 feet, which isn't allowed under our city standards. And if we wanted to really have the road serve that purpose to connect to the park, we really ought to have some sort of parking for them. So that's, that's why we're looking at phasing this. They have, what they have shown is in line with what the commission was speaking to in the first phase, which is this roadway should look more like a city street, it shouldn't be like a drive aisle with parking backing out onto it, it should have a sidewalk on one side at least. And so that's, that's what they have shown.
I, that's, that would be the minimum, yeah. I didn't think of it that way, but that might be. So we think this is the road that's going to connect then to the parkway?
Yes, it appears to be, and it's somewhat in line with the irrevocable offer to dedicate, the easement that they had set aside with their map. There may need to be some very minor adjustments to the alignment from that map, but yes, this is the beginning of the roadway that would connect.
Where would I see that? Would I see that in, like, Attachment Three, that I'm seeing sidewalks and lights and...
That is part of it, that's the landscape plan. It certainly would be, reading the condition, it would be acceptable for the commission to ask that as a part of the design review, that the full concept of the road and its alignment be shown as far as what its ultimate configuration and extension might look like, and we can include that as a part of the design review. That's, that's open through today, that is a comment that we can ask them to add on to that. But as far as construction of the actual section, our engineering division would prefer...
No, I can understand you don't want to take it all the way down, but I mean, somewhere we have to start the roadway. And so I've been, I was trying to look at, and I don't see it in here quite like you're describing it. So that's fine. Are we going to put that as a part of the conditions, or...
We can actually ask them to provide that prior to final consideration by the design review administrator.
Okay, this is my last one. Ready, Kathy?
Sure.
Okay, so on Lake Washington Boulevard, there is a turn out or a turn in, and we discussed that it would be a right turn only, which is what we did with their same project down at Panda Express, Streets of London, and they put out a couple of little sticks in the roadway, and everybody just pulls out and kind of drives around them.
No.
So since we know that the right turn only sign isn't sufficient, is there a way that we can put a condition in here that says they have to build some sort of a center divider to actually prevent people from making a left turn and force them to use the stoplight?
So you're referring to the portion in Phase One, is that correct? The over by Suki Sushi and Streets?
The one where everybody pulls out and makes just a little jog and makes a left turn. So we have to prevent that in this project from making left turns. So I think that we should, instead of allowing a couple of sticks in the road, we should actually have them build a center divider to prevent left turns. And that's well within our privy to do that, as a commission.
Yeah, on this, the two drive-through pads, in Attachment Three, the northern drive access to Lake Washington Boulevard is showing a pork chop. That is an actual physical curb that will help preclude illegal left turn.
That's not going to stop what's going on, because the roadway itself has no way to prevent making a left turn. There's just lines out there like we have now. And therefore, I thought the ideal scenario in my mind is to build an actual center divider out there.
Lake Washington Boulevard is not in its ultimate configuration. If we put in a median now, it would be torn out when we do go to expand it.
But I mean, for the safety of the people out there, I think you need to do something more than put a couple of sticks in the ground, because it doesn't work. And we've proven that it hasn't worked.
Well, we have mentioned that again to Public Works to see what else can be done out in the roadway with Phase One, and we'll talk to them about this one as well. But we really see it more as a police enforcement issue.
I don't, I see it as a safety issue. So I, I would suggest that we have a condition that says that the applicant and the city engineer and the police and fire have to agree that something better has to be done than the pork chop, because the pork chop won't stop the issue. And that's, I mean, we've already proven that at the other end of the building. We can't get people to stop making left turns down there. So we have to do something for the safety of the people, and I don't know what else you can do. But I would, I mean, I feel so strongly about this, that I actually, while I'm not opposed to the restaurant portion of it at this point, I would be opposed to putting anything in there that would jeopardize the safety of the people. I mean, I think it's that important out there, because you see people almost get hit in the other place all the time. So I really think that, I personally would like to see if there isn't something we could put in here that would protect the people a little bit and stop an illegal left turn out there. And I don't know what we can do, but I would, I'll think about what I want to do, but I think it's very important.
Okay, I'll keep that on the list as a remaining issue.
Okay.
Joe, any comments? No comments? Any comments on this side? Wow, okay.
Just a few comments I would like to throw out. Having, having been involved in a fair amount of retail planning over the years, there were three things that I typically always look for in fast foods, and I think they've been addressed pretty well here. One is the traffic issue, which I was asking Kathy about, was the onsite circulation adequate and met our traffic standards. The other was lighting, which, you know, is there going to be any spill into any residential area? And I think the staff report said, "No, there isn't." However, I would like to actually add to that a comment that my colleague, Commissioner Moore, brought up, I think a month or so back, where the lighting, not just into the residential area, but in fact, should be controlled so that it's not producing glare into traffic driving toward that center. So I think all off-site, I'd like to have all lighting addressed in terms of its spillage off-site. But, and I think usually the key item, and this was one that I really spent a lot of time looking at, was the noise issue. And noise being directional, I think the direction that the order boxes face, which is away from the residential and toward the street, is, you know, truly, I think, a real advantage. Sound just doesn't bend around, with all due respect to our consultant, it typically does not bend around and go back the other way. So it is always, it's starting out as a source away from the residences, and I suspect that's what's contributed to the sound level being acceptable there. So those three key levels, I think, have been, you know, addressed pretty well, as long as we can address the lighting. I'd like to address that one as we move forward.
Kathy, I did see where lighting was a part of the project description, but I cannot find it. Is it, is it stated that spillage, well, lighting would need to be contained onsite? I know that...
Yes.
Okay, so it is, so...
And it would be addressed when we get the photometric plans to show that that is indeed occurring.
Okay, so Commissioner Chase's comments on lighting spillage into traffic would be addressed through the design review already. Okay, thank you very much. I actually have some comments. First, I'd like to thank staff for the very complete report. I do believe it addresses most of the predictable concerns. And with that, I do mean that it looks like the applicant actually paid attention to comments that the commission has made on previous applications, and I think they did a good job on that one. I have a couple of concerns that aren't really brought up in this application, however. The city has a restaurant strategic plan. I don't usually have to look at it, usually we want more. The general consensus for the town is that we need some restaurants. However, there are approximately 95 restaurants in West Sacramento with overwhelmingly majority the quick serve or family dining, not full service. There's a lack of full-service restaurants, and I do believe that's a quality of life issue, and also the lack of restaurants around Business Park area is, you know, quality of life issue. I'd like to hear from some of the Southport residents on the commission, how, kind of, how they feel about this project actually, because there was also a restaurant survey done through the city with 1,200 participants. The residents cite insufficient dining choices in West Sacramento other than fast food and mom-and-pop restaurants, and they noted that they're leaving the city to dine because of limited table service choices and lack of knowledge about local mom-and-pop restaurants. That's my biggest concern. It's, it's not the layout, it's not the actual business. McDonald's, I know, does, I think it does pretty well in this town, there are three of them already, and there are two Taco Bells. I don't live in Southport, but the general sense that I got was, we were moving in a good direction with the types of restaurants that were going in there, and I'm not sure the drive-through, quick serve restaurants are what the city's actually looking for at this time, based on the survey done by, done by the city. So I'm looking actually for comments back on the, on the commission on this one. Am I off-base? On track? Not a concern?
I can speak generally, although I, just as a citizen in Southport, I also happened to be on a Metro Chamber, West Sec Chamber business walk a few months back, and went through actually the industrial park near the port, and over and over heard that there needed to be more food choices in that area. I think, I think this, what's before us, actually addresses some of those issues that I heard in terms of adding a diversity and some other options. So I also happen to know parents who find the convenience from time to time having a drive-through be available to them, so I think the number of families in Southport could be served by, by this, although, again, it's just, just an opinion of one, but since you've asked the question, I think adding diversity of options for us, and this certainly would do that, would be helpful.
I would agree with that. I mean, I, if you, as a resident over there, I would love to see more full-service options, no doubt about it. But I do agree with what Commissioner Sandy said regarding options, quick options for the families over there.
Okay.
I think I too would like to echo the comments of my fellow commissioners. I think we'd all, I do live in Southport and would certainly love to see more choices there. But I think these are also market-driven too, and they're based on the demand from the community, and I do think, I think we heard from one parent that they would serve a, you know, a need for kids after soccer, softball, other things to gather and come by there. So I know, given our neighboring city instituting the crash tax, we want to try to keep more of our time and dollars here, and, but I think it's appropriate use here.
As a, as a resident in Southport, I can't think of another restaurant in Southport that even has a drive-through, so this would be one out of, we have zero now, so...
That's actually a very key point. The commission is voting on what would be the first drive-through, so... Actually, Kathy, I do have some questions or comments on the design review, specifically Taco Bell. It doesn't appear that the building has gone through full design review yet, is my question was, it doesn't appear to look Creole at all.
It's their first attempt, it does have some Creole elements to it. We will be providing them with comments and working with their, their architects, so there will be, there will be some changes to it before we get to the final result. Since, since they had given us the, their initial packet, I decided to include it even though it wasn't done, just so you could get a feel for their starting point.
Okay, and I won't let this comment actually influence my vote on this one, but the West Bridge Plaza design guidelines actually emphasize the use of building clusters. I don't see this one as following that. I'd like to see if we move forward with additional development in, in this development, that we actually follow that clustering that we looked at in Phase One, or that was done in Phase One. I thought that was a very nice idea, how the, how the restaurants are kind of clustered together. An example, another example, there's a Burger King in the IKEA shopping center that is actually clustered with other businesses as well, and it just doesn't stand out quite as much as a typical fast food restaurant, but it's just a side comment. There are a couple of remaining issues, actually, there's one remaining issue, pork chop, Commissioner Moore?
So I understand your... So I understand your concern, and I would propose a condition that would ask the city engineer to evaluate that drive-through and determine whether or not any additional measures can be provided in Lake Washington Boulevard to preclude illegal left-hand turns. I would try to push it, rather than make it a hard and fast requirement for a median to be installed, since we don't have the development, the city engineer here to comment as to whether that feasibly can be done. I say that because there is a large water line that's right underneath the center of the roadway, so, but I, to try and address the safety issue...
I understand that, but I'm just very concerned that we don't create a monster out there, and I don't know how else to say it. So if you think that meeting with the engineer and the applicant would be sufficient, I'm happy with that, but I'd just like it as a condition, a comment. I don't know what you want me to put it as, but I mean, I think it's very important.
We'll put it as a condition to, for the city, for the applicant and the city engineer to review the access points onto Lake Washington Boulevard and determine whether any additional physical improvements are needed to address the safety of illegal left-hand turning movements.
Okay, and you can explain to our side what I was talking about?
Yes.
Okay.
And I'll also follow up with them on the Phase One driveway, which that property is now owned by Elliott Homes.
Right.
And see if some additional measures can be put in place there.
Even a couple more sticks might help, you know. The other comment being the lighting, did you figure out, when our commissioner was talking about lighting not going towards the residents, but also containing it so it's not going into the street? Is that part of...
Our city standards require full cutoff measures at the property line and at the right-of-way, so that should concentrate the lighting on the site.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Charlie and I have one last question before calling a motion. The full concept of the road be shown in the full design review? How do we capture that this evening? Do we need to actually include that in our vote? Or is that a recommendation for staff to include in the design review?
It would be a recommendation for staff.
Thank you. Okay, unless there are further comments, question?
I'd like to move the recommended action with the addition of the condition regarding safety, as Charlene mentioned.
Well, that one, yeah. I'd second that motion.
Including the full concept of the road be shown in the full design review? Thank you. Okay, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No? That would be a no. Thank you. Motion, or item passes?
And I need to read the appeal instructions?
Thank you.
Any interested party may appeal the decision of the Planning Commission in this matter to the City Council by filing a written appeal with the city clerk, who is located on the third floor at City Hall, within 15 days of tonight's action. The appeal must be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee for the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. That actually brings us to the end of our meeting, or to informal discussion, if there's anything to bring up.
I apologize, I have a business trip and will unfortunately miss our next meeting. And I would like to say one more time, I really was honored to serve as chair, and I, you're doing a great job, Mr. LeBig, and I, congratulations to both of you, and welcome to our new commissioners.
With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this meeting in honor of our two new commissioners, and in honor of the two commissioners that have left the commission, Mr. Moore Zini and Mr. Ledesma.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you, meeting adjourned.
Thank you.